Good morning. And welcome to this first meeting of the council for this term. It is nine AM and I will call this meeting to order. Before we proceed, I would like to ask Nick Loeb to rise and introduce our new solicitor.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council, I'm delighted to introduce our new solicitor who's just joined the legal services department this week. It's Andrew Case, Andrew, join me. So he's a recent call to the bar and he just finished his year clerking for the courts in London for a variety of judges that are in the London courts. And I will keep it brief with that, and I'll just ask Andrew if he wants to add anything, but.
Just how pleased I am to be here.
That's it.
Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Warden.
Thank you. Would also like to take a moment to pay tribute and credit to Brian Lehman and his staff for the council chambers renovations. I know they worked very hard to get us here today. As you can tell, there's still some renovation work going on in the building and it'll be there for quite some time. I understand perhaps up to a year to get some of this done. But still, the chambers look great, they're bright. And it'll take some use to getting or getting used to around here, seems like there's a lot of space around the the top end of the horseshoe. But definitely a new look for Elgin. We will move on with the agenda, which me includes the adoption of the minutes. And if we can have that motion read, please.
Certainly, be it resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted.
Need a mover and secondor? Counselor Jones will move, Counselor Giger will second. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Remind council of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. See none noted. Moving on with presenting petitions, presentations and delegations, I note there are none. So we'll next move into committee of the whole. Have the motion, please.
Be it resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
Mover and secondor, please. Okay, moved by Counselor Hens, seconded by Counselor Cocket or Cookett. That all in favor? And that is carried. You know, if it's a good start when your pen breaks. Moving on to section six, reports of council outside boards and staff. Section six point one, we have the manager procurement and risk presenting the report that provides details regarding general insurance and risk management services for two thousand and twenty-three. Morning, Mike.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, thank you. So this this report through you to county council, sorry. So this report provides details on the general insurance and risk management services for two thousand and twenty-three. So Marsh Canada was selected last year through a competitive RFP process to provide services for a period of up to five years. So this is the second year of that contract term. The proposed increase premium cost for two thousand and twenty-three is just over five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which unfortunately is a twenty-one percent increase from the expiring two thousand and twenty-two premium. So as noted in the report, our insurance or sorry, our insurer is stating that the increases are a result of the property value increases, mandated inflation increases, market conditions and the cyber claim that we had earlier this year. So at this time, it's not recommended that the county go to market. We are recommending renewal of this insurance program for a one-year term. In addition to the to this this summary, Marsh has also provided options for higher property insurance deductible. So that will result in a twenty-eight thousand dollar premium savings in exchange for a fifty thousand dollar deductible. So the current deductible is ten thousand dollars for property. So there's always a risk in taking on a higher deductible, but based on our property claims history, this higher deductible is being recommended. Also, due to the Terrace Lodge redevelopment project, phase one will add an additional twenty million dollars of insured values, which will increase our premium cost by about forty thousand dollars when that portion of the building is transferred to the county. That forty thousand dollars is not included in that five hundred and sixteen thousand dollar number. So the for staff recommendations are before you, and at this time I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Mike, any questions for staff? Yes, Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Mr. Warden, can you tell me why we wouldn't go to market as you stated?
So we did go to market last year. And it's currently a hard market is what the the insurers are saying. And the other item, the reason why we're not is because the the premium value that we're paying this year is actually lower than the the next cost proponent from the RFP last year. So I don't, I doubt that we would see any savings if we if we went out to market. There's a there's a limited number of firms that take on municipal type business. And just based on on those numbers from from last year and and looking at the number for for this year is still lower than the the second highest proponent. That's why we're recommending we don't go to market.
Yes.
Through you, Warden, two-part question, one, what was the last claim and the amount of that claim, please? And just secondly, I take it this is an annual contract? Thank you.
So the last claim was in two thousand and fourteen. It was for some flooding that we had at the Elmer Library. Unfortunately, I don't have what that what that number was. I would guess if I had, but I don't have the number in front of me, unfortunately. And sorry, the second part of your question.
It's an annual contract through you, Mr. Warden, it's an annual contract, I presume?
Correct, so the RFP is is written in a in a way that it's a it's a five-year contract with one-year renewals based on their proposal for for that year, so yes.
Yes.
Just to clarify through you, Mr. Warden, it's a five-year, it's starting the five-year this year or you're you're, is it annual or is it five years?
So the RFP was last year, it is a it's a five-year contract, but it's renewed annually. But we have the option not to renew at any at any point, so this is the second year of that of that RFP process.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Mike, just one question from me, considering the fact that we will eventually be taking on the Terrace Lodge redevelopment premium increase of forty thousand dollars, why is that not included into the the cost at this point?
Because we don't have the the property as of yet, it's not transferred to the county. That's why I just listed as a as a as a separate item, so when that happens, we'll advise Marsh that we are now in control of that portion of the the building, and then that will apply at that time.
All right, then I assume that the forty thousand dollar addition will be included in the budget going forward. Okay. Anyone else have anything further? Okay. Motion, please.
Be it resolved that the general insurance and risk management services program proposed by Marsh Canada Limited be approved at the annual premium cost of five hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars plus taxes commencing December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two and expiring on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And that the property insurance deductible be increased to fifty thousand dollars per occurrence from ten thousand dollars, resulting in a premium savings of twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that an additional forty thousand dollars be added to the two thousand and twenty-three insurance policy for the property insurance related to phase one of the Terrace Lodge redevelopment project. And further, that the manager procurement and risk and director of finance and treasurer be authorized to renew the policy.
Thank you, mover and secondor, please. Counselor Widner and Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Six point two, Director of Homes and Senior Services, Homes Administration, Dietary, Housekeeping and Laundry and Nursing Policy Updates. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Before you, as the report as you stated on the homes policy manuals, departmental policy and procedure manuals ensure consistency and quality in the services by the provided by our homes. They're reviewed annually, they're also reviewed with legislative changes to ensure inclusion of best practice and alignment with current legislation. On April eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two, the Fixing Long-Term Care Act two thousand and twenty-one and Ontario Regulation two forty-six slash twenty-two were proclaimed. The Ministry of Long-Term Care has provided timelines for policy review revisions and implementation of legislative changes, and this work continues to be prioritized by the homes management staff. Policy manuals are reviewed by respective department managers and then by myself, and the applicable policies listed in your report have now been finalized. The majority of revisions listed in the report are very minor in nature and they reflect the actual current practice as directives have changed throughout two thousand and twenty-two and throughout the pandemic. The majority of those changes are related to infection prevention and control practices that are already put into place or the addition of references, algorithms and resources. There you will note a number of new policies listed in the other report, and those policies are also reflective of current practice. But this is now, these policies have been identified in the legislation as as being a requirement for a written policy or procedure. So we've developed those policies and included them accordingly. The financial implications, I'll just mention quickly, so it is imperative that staff ensure that the requirements of the act and the regulations, including policy review and implementation are met to support both compliance and appropriate funding to long-term care homes. Communication requirements, the revised policy changes will be communicated to staff, residents, families, visitors, volunteers and contracted workers as required. And I say as required because these policy changes are very minor in nature and there's there are the current practices that are in place, so each departmental manager will assess whether or not this policy needs additional education for frontline staff, this could be done through the online surge learning portal or through a departmental staff meeting. And just because we have some new council members, I just wanted to share a little bit about our annual mandatory education process. So the Ministry of of Long-Term Care does mandate a number of topics and policies that have to be education provided for all new hires as well as annually. So we have developed an online search learning or the online search learning platform and there's a monthly assignment for every staff member so that they don't have to do everything in one month, so it's spread out and we try to do it as equally as possible. The team members are pretty diligent about making sure each other that they have time to complete those tasks. We've also taken additional steps with the IT department to make sure there's iPads and devices readily available in all devices, including the kitchen, the laundry room. So whenever they have a spare moment that they can pop on it, do their search learning and complete those tasks. So the administration, dietary, housekeeping, laundry and nursing manual policy changes. We do feel that they meet the legislative requirements and best practices to support resident and staff safety and service delivery. There's two recommendations before council today. The first is that the report be received and filed. And second, that council approve the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Administration Dietary, Housekeeping, Laundry and Nursing Policy Manual Updates to ensure alignment with current Ministry of Long-Term Care legislation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle, for that report. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Yes, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Warden, through you to Michelle, it's never-ending the paperwork that we see coming across the table. Thanks for all the hard diligent work.
Thanks, Counselor Jones, it's certainly a team effort and everyone's got hands on this project work, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none?
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Administration Dietary, Housekeeping and Laundry and Nursing Policy Updates dated November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed. And that council approve the the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Administration Dietary, Housekeeping and Laundry and Nursing Policy Manual Updates to ensure alignment with current Ministry of Long-Term Care legislation.
Thank you, mover and secondor, please, Counselor Giger. Counselor Jones will second. All in favor? And that's carried. Moving on with section three, six point three, Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk, Schedule of Elgin County Council Meetings for two thousand and twenty-three. Morning, Jenna.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council, the purpose of this report is to seek approval for a schedule of regular meetings of county council for two thousand and twenty-three. Each year, county council approves a schedule of regular council meetings that, once approved, may be amended with notice pursuant to the Municipal Act. County Council endeavors to meet in the council chambers of the Elgin County Administration Building on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. The draft schedule attached to the report facilitates the schedule as much as possible. Of note, in the draft schedule is the suggestion of holding a meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, as the fourth Tuesday in January two thousand and twenty-three conflicts with the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference. Additionally, only one meeting is proposed for August due to a conflict with the Association of Municipalities Ontario Conference. The recommendations in the report are to receive and file the report, approve the attached schedule as presented, and that notice of the meeting schedule be made available through the municipal office and posted on the County of Elgin website. At this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Jenna, any questions? Barely straightforward, Julie?
Be it resolved that the report titled Schedule of Elgin County Council Meetings for two thousand and twenty-three dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two from the Manager of Administrative Services and Deputy Clerk be received and filed, and that the schedule of Elgin County Council Meetings for two thousand and twenty-three be approved as presented. And further, that notice of the two thousand and twenty-three schedule of county council meetings and any special meetings outside of the adopted schedule of regular meetings of council be available from the municipal office and posted on the County of Elgin's website in accordance with Elgin County Council's procedural bylaw number twenty, number nineteen dash forty-one.
Thank you, mover and secondor, please. Counselor Noble and Counselor Hens will second, all in favor? That that's carried. Is that a question?
Warden, I have a question about the, sorry, I think this is inopportune. Please, through you, if I can ask, the April dates don't seem to make sense to me, if you could just review them, please. Good Friday and Easter are not the same.
Oh, I see. There, there, there's an error on the schedule.
Is the error within the notes or within the the schedule?
So the date in the chart says April twenty, or April eleventh and twenty-fifth, but in the notes section, it notes that Good Friday is April seventh and Easter Monday is April twenty-fourth. So.
That's correct.
Easter Monday is the tenth. So the dates in under the date column would be what we're suggesting, and there's an error in the notes column.
So the errors in the notes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification and thank you for picking that up. All right, moving on with section six, four, General Manager of Engineering Planning Enterprise Deputy CAO ETEL Point of Presence License Agreement, I assume you've got this one, Nick?
I do, thank you, Warden. So this is a report bringing forward a agreement with a recommendation to authorize it for a talent communication provider named ATEL to erect a small structure that looks like a small steel hut in practical terms at the intersection of Iona and Talbot. And it links to council's strategic goal of improving high-speed internet to rural areas. So last year, ATEL Networks executed our larger telecom blanket agreement with the county and in order for them to build out their fiber network in the west end of the county, they need to establish these structures to essentially, my understanding, and I'm not the engineer, is to basically power their lines and make sure it continues working at all time, that's the point of presence. And engineering has had the opportunity to review the site plan that's attached to the back of the agreement there. I can advise council through you, Mr. Warden, that since I first drafted this report, the site plan that's attached to it says preliminary, we've since received a stand copy from the engineer and there are no substantive changes. The existing recommendation accounts for that, even though it's not attached here because it's the the recommendation includes substantially in the form of the agreement attached because I did anticipate that change, so. All that, just to say, both engineering and legal are satisfied with the standard engineering drawing that's been received. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions, the agreement has the usual things that we look for in legal, which is the company has insurance, there's indemnities related to any claims we might receive related to the placement of the point of presence hut, and there's an annual license fee for their right to be there. And subject to any questions, that's my presentation.
Thank you very much for that report, Nick, any questions? Looking forward to having that down and done. And so. Perfect. Perfect. The motion, please.
Be it resolved that the report from the Director of Legal Services and the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise entitled ATEL Point of Presence License Agreement be received and filed as information, and that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin authorize the Chief Administrative Officer and Warden to execute a license agreement with ATEL Networks, Inc., substantially in the form and agreement attached to this report as appendix A.
Mover and secondor, please, Counselor Hens will move and Counselor Jones will second, all in favor? That's carried. Six point five, Chief Administrative Officer and Network Analyst, Information Technology Services Asset Management Policy. Julie?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. This report contemplates a new policy for IT services with the county, specifically an asset management policy. This is an outstanding policy and one that would help support budgeting and help support life cycle timing with respect to replacement of equipment. I will note for council, this is one of many outstanding policies in the IT department, so we'll be bringing forward a number of reports in the coming months for your review. I will also note that we did a comprehensive review of kind of industry standards associated with replacement cycles and then the timelines contained within the policy are slightly longer than industry standards. I would like to thank the IT team for their input into this policy, specifically Ollie Marco. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report, any questions? We'll have the motion then, please.
Be it resolved that the report from the Chief Administrative Officer titled Information Technology Asset Management Policy be received and filed, and that council hereby approve policy number ITS one point zero as presented.
Mover and secondor, please, Counselor Giger and Counselor Crockett will second, all in favor? I see that is carried. Section six, six, Chief Administrative Officer, the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council, the purpose of this report is to seek council's authorization and approval for the attached memorandum of understanding with Kettle Creek Conservation Authority for the provision of tree commissioner and weed inspector services, an arrangement that we have had with Kettle Creek Conservation Authority since nineteen ninety-nine. The MOU includes several housekeeping changes to ensure alignment with recent amendments to the Conservation Authorities Act. And with that, I think the report is fairly self-explanatory, but I'd be pleased to answer any specific questions you may have.
Thank you for the report. Any questions regarding this? And we'll have the motion, please.
Be it resolved that the report from the Chief Administrative Officer titled KCCA Memorandum of Understanding dated November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two be received and filed, and that the memorandum of understanding between the Corporation of the County of Elgin and Kettle Creek Conservation Authority for a program and services required for the duties of tree commissioner and weed inspector be approved as presented and made effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. And further, that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed to sign the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, mover and secondor, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? Now declare that carried. Six, seven, Chief Administrative Officer, Elgin Metavi EMS, Elgin, Ontario, Inc., approval for format for community paramedicine services motor vehicle leases and authorization for execution of vehicle-specific leases.
Julie? Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. The county has received one hundred percent funding for community paramedicine services in Elgin County from the Ministry of Health. And this is for the provision of community paramedicine within Elgin and for the city of St. Thomas. We intend to enter into an agreement with Metavi to provide community paramedicine services within the geographic limits of Elgin and St. Thomas. And the intended agreement will provide in part that the county supply Metavi with, among other things, vehicles in order to provide this service. Again, the programs that we funded in two thousand and twenty-one, we received one million dollars in funding for this program. Two thousand and twenty-two, two million dollars. Two thousand and twenty-three, two million dollars, and that extends into the end of March, two thousand and twenty-four. So the recommendations are that you receive and file the report and that you approve the proposed format for motor vehicle lease agreements between Metavi and Elgin Community Paramedicine Services, and that you authorize the CAO and Warden to execute the agreements. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report, any questions? Concerns? Yes, Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Have we typically been satisfied with the life cycle on these vehicles, are we getting good value for what we're getting?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Widner, absolutely. We do tend to follow the life cycle of the ministry. So that's what our ambulances are are on in terms of an approved life cycle. So we will keep close tabs on the explorers that we've just purchased for this program and present to council a revised life cycle policy for for these vehicles specifically for your review and consent.
I presume ambulances have a shorter life cycle.
Than than other vehicles, though we do stretch them and in recent years we we have had to because of supply supply chain shortages. They extend the life.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Counselor Sloan.
Through the Warden question, where are the vehicles purchased?
Absolutely. I can I can follow up later in this meeting. If that's.
Sure, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll have the motion, please.
Be it resolved that the report to council dated December first, two thousand and twenty-two and entitled Elgin Metavi EMS, Elgin, Ontario, Incorporated, approval of format for community paramedicine motor vehicle leases and authorization for execution of vehicle-specific leases be received and filed, and that Elgin County Council approve the proposed format for motor vehicle lease agreements between Metavi EMS, Elgin, Ontario, Incorporated and Elgin County Community Paramedicine Services Motor Vehicles. And further, that Elgin County Council authorize the warden and chief administrative officer to execute the said motor vehicle lease agreements to be prepared by Elgin Legal Services in keeping with such approved format and relate to the three community paramedicine vehicles for a term commencing November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two and ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four and contemplating a nominal rental rate of one dollar for such term.
Mover and secondor, please. Counselor Widner will move, Counselor Jones will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Moving along in section six, eight, Chief Administrative Officer and Manager of Administrative Services Deputy Clerk, Council Committees Considerations.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. So we'll just share the presentation, are we sharing the presentation? And and Jenna and I will will share in the presentation today. The purpose of this presentation is to provide background information about all of councils committees and participation in external boards and committees, as well provide council with the opportunity to have an open discussion about the county's return on investment with some of the committees and your participation on these committees, including just as some conversation starters, things like staff time, value to the county and community impact. As well, we hope to collect your feedback to inform changes to council's committee bylaw for presentation and enactment at a future meeting. So the recommendations are that you'll receive and file the report and that you will direct us to amend the committee bylaw to reflect And that you will direct us to amend the committee bylaw to reflect. The proposed changes that you bring forward today as part of your discussion. So to provide you with some background. Each year, the newly elected warden of the county makes recommendations and county council appoints. Representatives from within their membership to various committees, including local boards and agencies. And that's generally done at the first meeting in December. We had a really condensed timeline between the warden's election and the first first meeting. So we we hope to get organized, present committee bylaw changes. At your first meeting in January and undertake appointments at that time. That will allow the warden to have conversations with members with respect to what committees you may be interested in serving on. So some general. Considerations. Include quorum. So a key consideration and challenge that we faced across committees. Is specifically those committees that have community members who attend. Is the inability to achieve quorum and failure to achieve quorum. Really impacts the work of the committee and prevents the advancement of some of our key initiatives. So today we'll we'll want to highlight any committees wherein we've had challenges achieving quorum. So in the future, we'd also like to express some clearer expectations and training. Before members or from the community at large is. Are appointed to to the committee to ensure consistent meeting attendance. And to ensure that these committee meetings are worth everyone's time. So staff recommend as one of the proposed changes and items for discussion. Is that the committee bylaw be amended to include a mechanism. For the removal of inactive members. So if we have a member who hasn't attended a meeting all year, they may be holding up a spot for a member who is. Eager to be really engaged in this work. So. Open to feedback. From council.
Okay, yes, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Julie and and counsel. Obviously, I sat as chair of the Environmental Committee. It was a struggle to now be being nice to them. Yeah, oh, three members that basically didn't participate. One resigned. There's also. Going through COVID, new staff's restrictions of time, they tended not to push the meetings as hard as probably could have. But I found through that conversation, many members is. Dissatisfaction and what they thought their responsibilities were. Maybe that was. Firstly, our problem is communicating what they're. What they could achieve. A struggle with. Environmental Committee going forward and with the restrictions that we put on them as far as what their mandate was. I do have concerns that. If the even forward again for another four years. I think we have to revisit and what their mandate is. For sure. And we are definitely gonna have to thank some of the members. I know there'll be at least three that won't return maybe before.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you. Pardon me. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would echo Counselor Jones's comments around attendance. It has been a struggle, so I would fully endorse the recommendation to a. Make sure the expectations are clear. And and I think that would include all members of the committee, including members from the community at large. And and a mechanism for removal. I think that would actually benefit everybody, including the members who are struggling with the scheduling. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any additional comments?
Great, so I'll move on.
Let's move on.
Okay. So as part of today's presentation, we will be talking about four different types of committees and or boards. The first are legislated committees, the second are standing committees. Third advisory committees and the fourth are agencies board and council appointments. There too. So moving right into legislated committees. Legislated committees are statutory committees established under certain acts to give you some background. And the county only has one included within its procedural committee bylaw. And that is the county's Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee. We often refer to this as the RIPA Committee. This is a legislated committee of council and is established under the Planning Act, therefore must remain as a standing committee. Of council. So the Rural Initiatives Committee does double as the RIPA Committee, including some other functions. Administering the community grant program as one example. This was combined in twenty sixteen in response to Bill seventy three and changes to the Development Charges Act and the Planning Act. Which required that all upper tier and single tier levels of government establish planning advisory committees. The mandate is to promote the viability of agriculture and rural affairs in the county and throughout the province. To examine issues like the global economy on agricultural practices here in Elgin, the viability of schools in rural communities. And alternative sources of economic development in rural areas. The committee serves to develop goals and objectives to improve and promote rural life. And demonstrate council's commitment to delivering services to rural communities by recommending a budget to council that will accomplish those identified goals. The committee also acts as the planning advisory committee by providing information. Perspective and recommendations to county council. Well, on many different planning matters that may have an impact on Elgin County or its local municipalities. And from time to time, it reviews the provisions, the official plan. And related policy policies and background documents makes recommendations to council for general amendments to the plan, including. Their involvement in the five year official plan review. The committee also advises council on general planning and development issues of council. And local municipal significance. And reports to council on proposed land use policy changes as introduced by the Province of Ontario. As previously mentioned, this committee administers the county's community grant program. And this program invests in established and emerging community programs and events. That meet identified community needs, build capacity and support Elgin County's strategic plan. Through this program, organizations can apply for funding to support. responsiveness, effectiveness and resilience with respect to their operations and the events they hold within the county. I have provided a link. We do have a dedicated webpage for the purpose of engaging with our community. So the composition is three members of council. And a member of the Elgin Federation of Agriculture. Currently within the committee's. Committee bylaw. The terms of reference indicate that the Elgin Federation member is a non voter, non voting capacity. And we'd like to recommend a change to the terms of reference that this member be allowed to vote. So open to any discussion there.
Yes, any thoughts on that? Yes, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would also endorse this recommendation. I think it's difficult enough to recruit members. Prepare just as much as every member of the community or the committee and provide valuable input. And I think a vote would would be warranted.
Thank you for that. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I would agree with Counselor Dujire.
Any other thoughts?
So we do have a second recommendation with respect to the RIPA Committee, and that is that we. Adjust the timelines associated with the intake intakes for the community grant program. Just to allow staff more time to review applications for completeness and eligibility. And changes to the intakes can be reviewed by the committee or proposed changes rather could be reviewed by the committee at its first meeting.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any changes that are being contemplated that would impact the programming. For those particular grant recipients. So I don't think it's going to be a big problem. Assuming, of course, that the county wishes to continue in the grant program. That's another question.
And and we'll have, I'm sure we'll have that conversation as part of the twenty twenty three budget deliberations.
Yes.
To give council a bit of information on the community grant program. We have a policy that suggests a proportionate amount per resident that we serve be set aside. For the community grant program and that equates to approximately sixty seven thousand dollars annually. And then that money through criteria established by the committee and approved by council is used to administer the program.
Okay. I've not seen any objections, Julie.
So we'll move ahead to standing committees pursuant to council's committee by law. A standing committee is a committee established by council. Comprised entirely of members of council to carry out duties on an ongoing basis as specified by council. And we have four standing committees. One is the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee. The Terrace Lodge Fundraising Committee, which is technically a subcommittee of the Redevelopment Steering Committee. A Budget Committee and a Human Resources Committee. So first we'll talk about the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Committee. And to provide a really high level project overview, the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Project is thirty six million dollar undertaking. With. Approximately fifty percent of funding coming from the Ministry of Long Term Care in support of that project. It does require close council oversight because it is one of. If not our biggest project that we've undertaken at the county in decades. So the purpose of the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee is to advise the County of Elgin staff. On the design, construction, scope and schedule for the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Project. Working within the budget approved by county council. It's expected that the committee's timeline for completion of its assigned tasks will be twenty twenty four once the project is complete. We do have a dedicated website or webpage for this project, and I encourage members to to visit that website for more information. The composition of this committee is three members of county council. And I plus the warden, so a total of four members of council. And it's recommended that the committee remain in place until twenty twenty four when the project is complete. Meetings for this committee to give you some information should you be interested are held on an as needed basis. Mostly pertaining to any sort of project changes, changes to timelines. Scope changes requiring authorization for change orders and those types of functions. So with that, I'd be open to any feedback.
Okay. Again, looking for any feedback on this. And as Julie Dory indicated, it is a large scale project, one that has a limited time horizon. Till twenty twenty four. I I tend to agree with her that we should have maintained a committee for oversight on this project. I'm seeing nods around the horseshoe.
So the next is the Terrace Lodge. Redevelopment Fundraising Committee of which for since inception, Counselor Shiger has been the chair. The fundraising committee is a subcommittee of the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Committee. And the purpose is to plan, coordinate, implement and evaluate fund development activities in support of operational and. What we'll always refer to as value added revenue generation. So this is not kind of the bones in the structure. This is. The elements of the project that will truly make Terrace Lodge a home for its residents and families and friends who visit. So it does not support the capital costs associated with the project. Rather, those value added enhancements. The composition is comprised of one member from each of Elgin's member municipalities. One member of the Terrace Lodge Auxiliary. A minimum of four and a maximum of ten members from local service groups, businesses and the community that represent the catchment area. And long term care staff, including the Director of Homes and Senior Services, the Terrace Lodge Administrator. And the manager of Program and Therapy Services Staff participate in these meetings but are non voting members. So key considerations here, the committee has experienced difficulty in the past achieving quorum for its meetings. Council recently approved changes to the terms of reference. That maintains quorum at five members, and this has allowed for broader participation while ensuring quorum is met at monthly meetings. Meetings are held monthly and going forward, it will be important to educate potential members on committee requirements. That are required of them well in advance of their participation in the committee to ensure that we're able to achieve quorum. The comforts of home is a three year campaign and is nearing the end of its second year. So consideration is. Given to will be need to may be needed to extend the timelines associated with this. Campaign in order to reach the fundraising target. There were some slowdowns associated with COVID. And consideration should be given to the day and time meetings are held if possible. We do have several staff members who attend the meetings and are often required to put in extra hours since it is an evening meeting and our staff generally work eight thirty to four thirty. So staff either have to adjust their hours or put in extra hours on the days that the meetings are held. So we'll be bringing forward those recommendations to the committee.
Okay, comments? Yes, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I I can comment as as the chair of this committee. That the changes in the terms of reference have worked well. So that was a good adjustment sort of midpoint and. Presuming that this will go forward so we can complete the the task at hand, I will definitely redouble the. The need for representation from each municipality and that each counselor around this horseshoe commits to. Submitting a name either from your own local council or from the community. We we will really need the assistant to carry this to to the end. So this will be very, very critical.
Okay, anything else? I don't want to miss the the last considerations that as much as possible, try to keep this into normal working hours for staff. I assume this is a hybrid meeting, meaning that it's broadcast.
Yes.
So there's a technical requirement. Why you haven't had some staff, certain staff present and. If they're at nighttime meetings, then obviously there's no time when they aren't here during the day. So there's a trade off. Yeah. Yeah, Counselor Shiger.
And I I want to add. Mr. Warden, so A, we really, really appreciate all the support that we got from staff. Obviously, we would not have been at this point. Yeah, we're at fifty percent. Of the of the target and staff has been essential and very, very flexible. As mentioned in the report, quorum has been difficult and every month we would canvas all members of the committee. What is what is the best time and with everyone's, you know. Commitments. Often it has had to be in the evening. So we really appreciated that the staff were flexible, but it is definitely something to take into consideration for everyone.
Thank you for that. Just, yes, Counselor Hans.
Mr. Warden, our current member works during the day. It's difficult to get people to do these things. So I guess we need a decision on which way this is going because she has indicated that she would participate again. So if it's during the day, that will be a challenge for Dunedin which anyway. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Jones.
Thank you. With the Health Recruitment Committee. Joined with the city, we do our meetings at eight thirty. So. So staff can get out of the day and I'm not sure if that's an option. He tried it. That that's it with the. Environmental Committee is kind of the same problem. We have. One member for sure that won't be back because her she has a new job and she works. That is the problem with good people that most of movers and shakers that are maybe are do have jobs.
Right.
That's gonna be an issue going forward.
Yes, Julie, please.
Through you, Mr. Warden's members. Counsel, if it's the will of of council to to support evening meetings, then we will make it work.
Okay, absolutely. I was almost thinking of, even if you could make it. Early evening hours, if that would work better, you know. I was almost thinking of even if you could make it early evening hours, if that would work better, you know, to get people home.
Yep.
Okay. Question for you.
I'll just say, Mr. Warden, if I made that, I think each committee without getting in the weeds here, but can look at also like, a lot of the reports from staff, for example, are very thorough. And staff may not need to attend the committee meeting and we can send questions in advance. So we could also review, you know, like minimizing the the support and then trying to as a committee to be as self reliant as possible when it's in the evening because they they do, everything is always always very well prepared. So I think there are ways we'll we'll be creative, and I think that applies to all committees.
I think it does too. Thank you for those comments. Two questions for either you, Julie, or you, Counselor Shiger. Are the meetings typically held in this building like in the or do you hold them across the county?
It has varied a lot based on COVID, based on just availability of space. So it's so it has varied a lot. We go with the availability of the space and the committee members. And and we do it as hybrid. So those who are maybe further from it, let's say we have them here, then can join in by Zoom. They don't have to drive in. So we've made it fairly accessible, and I think that applies to all committees as well.
Thank you for that. One additional question, any indication, we've got some indication over here of how many of your volunteers are willing to reengage?
I think we're waiting after this meeting or after, you know, committees are officially put in back in standing and then we'll resend the application and invitation. But I think generally speaking, there is good interest from the existing committee to continue, which is nice.
Absolutely, that's what I.
Yes.
Of course, I didn't have the mic on for that, but. Shall we carry on?
Sure. So the next standing committee is the Budget Committee. And historically, the composition has been three members of council plus the warden, so four in total. And the purpose is to review and assess budget principles, provide guidance to the C O and the Director of Finance as we develop the budget, both operating and capital, and to review as needed other financial matters, including budget implications of proposed new and substantially revised programs, et cetera. So for this year, because it is, we we do expect that it will be a challenging budget to develop. And we, as part of general orientation, I recommended to the outgoing Budget Committee that consideration be given to recommending to council that Committee of the Whole be leveraged as in place of the Budget Committee only during the twenty twenty three budget deliberations, with the hope that council would still appoint members to a Budget Committee, and the Budget Committee would resume regular activities as a committee in the spring following budget deliberations. So that's the key consideration presented to council with respect to the Budget Committee.
Okay, any concerns, Counselor Jones?
Just to comment, I think that's a great idea. I think all the new counselors around the table need to understand how the budget works and be a committee of the whole through this first year process would definitely benefit everybody. And then go back to committee.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden, when is the proposed budget made public?
The draft? Yes, Julie, Jeff.
Through you, Mr. Warden, we would seek council's consent. So council would review the proposed budget before it's ever posted publicly. So we would, as part of transparency and our notice requirements, post it as part of an agenda. But we wouldn't post it for public comment until such time as council provided input and direction to staff with respect to where we should be headed.
Okay.
Yeah, please follow it through you, Warden. So I see Central Elgin has posted theirs. Does that meet with the terms of what is expected of us? And I just want a little bit of understanding on 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 why certain municipalities might do it and the county wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind clarifying. Thank you.
I can really only speak to how I proposed to undertake this year's deliberations with a new council at the county, unable to speak to any kind of local budget processes. But it was my intent to seek council's feedback on any new or proposed changes to initiatives so that council could provide us with that direction before we even pull together the first budget for your review.
Counselor, I'm going to go with Counselor Shiger first and then come back.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Also want to clarify that we didn't conduct a budget survey and consulted with the public. So we have this data as a as a starting point so that this year the Budget Committee was still in place. So so that was coordinated through the Budget Committee. But so we are starting from a point of information from the public. And in the past, the what is proposed as a process seems to have worked well. But this sort of an inter process.
Yes, Julie.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council, I'm glad you mentioned that because the key piece that I was missing was that it was also my intention to follow kind of our regular budget presentation, so to speak, with the incoming council. So this process, while only moderately delayed from previous years, follows the the form and format and content of our previous budget deliberations here at the county.
Yes, Counselor Sloan.
Thank you. Through you, Warden, when do you expect the public to be able to comment on the document, please?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council, likely end of January.
Any other comments on the proposal ahead of us? Seeing none, you have one more comment, Julie, please.
One more comment, three, Mr. Warden, to members of council. So the the proposed format, since it is comprised of Committee of the Whole, can take one of two formats or type of meeting, so to speak. So one would be that it is incorporated as part of council's regular council schedule so as to not have to organize special meetings over and above unless absolutely necessary. But that that will result in longer council meetings for you. So that's what we are proposing and suggesting be the most efficient way to manage your time and staff's time as well be as transparent as possible with respect to the the budget process with our our community as well. The other format, which we can certainly accommodate, is to hold special budget meetings, which are just to discuss the budget as Committee of the Whole. So we would post notice and agendas as separate entities for the purposes of conducting that business. So open to feedback there as well.
Yes, Counselor Jones.
Generally, for me, it just makes sense to just lengthen the meeting open and then instead of having special meetings, because trying to get council members for a special meetings like her and cats, everybody's busy, right?
Yes. Yes, Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden, I agree with Counselor Jones.
It does make for a longer day and it is a is a, it's almost overwhelming when you first are exposed to the budget. But it it is a necessary function of this council needs to be done. And I agree with the process that I think we do do the twenty twenty three budget through the Committee of the Whole. But I do encourage the council to really consider reengaging the Budget Committee.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would agree. Once everybody sees the the initial budget, understands what happens, I think the committee does speed meetings up to some degree after that.
Great.
Okay.
Great.
Let's move on.
So the next standing committee is the Human Resources Committee. And this committee was established by council historically to review the recruitment process and then participate as part of the hiring panel for any director level and higher positions within the county. So should there be a vacancy in the, any of the director positions, the general manager position and the C O clerk position, then council would meet with H R, provide advices and guidance with respect to whether that recruitment be taken, undertaken internally or by external recruitment firms, review the the questions in advance and participate in hiring those individuals. So the composition is two members of council plus the warden, and the warden does serve as chair of that committee. So we aren't recommending any changes to this committee but are open to your feedback.
Okay. Any thoughts? Having had opportunity to serve on the Human Resources Committee this past term, it's functioned very well. And I don't know what our batting average is in terms of retention, but we did manage to hire some pretty good candidates.
Been pretty good for that.
Good.
So we'll move on to advisory committees then. And the committee by law indicates that this is a committee or subcommittee, which provides recommendations, advice, and information to council on specialized matters that relate to the purpose of that advisory committee and to facilitate public input to County Council on programs and ideas to assist in enhancing the quality of life in our community that is in keeping with council's strategic plan. So advisory committees are not able to give direction to staff, nor shall the committees request without the approval of council the preparation of any administrative reports, research, or work assignments, though this work does happen for advisory committees to a great extent. So I would recommend making a change to the committee's by law to remove this because it doesn't accurately reflect how staff support these committees. So the advisory committees include the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, Connectivity Committee, Environmental Committee, Museum Advisory Committee, and the Community Safety and Wellbeing Integration Table. So if we jump right into the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, this is the County of Elgin and Municipality of Central Elgin's Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. And it was created in two thousand with the intent to advise members of council on the implementation of Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act along with the affiliated Integrated Acceptability Standards Regulation. Thank you. So the reason why it's a joint committee with Central Elgin is because we have populations, serve populations of greater than ten thousand. And two or more municipalities can establish a committee to serve the legislative purposes. And that's why it is a joint committee there. So council does appoint one member of council to serve on the committee for a one year term. And we are bringing forward some changes to the terms of reference and proposed changes to composition associated with this advisory committee to be to incorporate more of our partner municipalities, even if they don't have populations of ten thousand or greater. So we recommend that council just put a pin in this and consider a fulsome report with some recommendations to changes, substantial changes at your first meeting in January. Open to feedback. So we'll move on to the Connectivity Committee, and this was a committee established by council in twenty twenty to address and identify high speed internet solutions for Elgin County, including being champions for high speed internet access across the county, receive updates from the SWIFT network, key project and investment on behalf of County Council in broadband infrastructure in our community. So the goal of this committee is to ensure availability of connectivity across the county to ensure affordability of connectivity. High speed internet is a necessity so to to ensure that there is adequate speed and services available, especially in some of our low density areas in the county, and to provide a mechanism to support enhanced education and learning, particularly when it comes to knowing which internet service providers are available to provide services and where. The Connectivity Committee did undertake some important work. They did engage a consultant I B I group to provide an analysis of the current state of connectivity in Elgin. And I have provided a link within your agenda to the full report. At its meeting in July of twenty twenty two, council supported the Connectivity Committee's recommendation to leverage existing staff resources and the Connectivity Committees to support option one, which recommends an advocacy plan, strategic purchasing, I S P, or internet service provider coordination. And to support this option, the committee did great work developing a connectivity advocacy plan in order to guide its efforts and council's efforts advocating with other levels of government. So the committee is comprised of two members, County Council, the warden, and up to four members at large and four representatives from the business community. So we did have a very active and engaged connectivity committee, no issues with or limited issues with achieving quorum. And I will just note, one consideration is a significant amount of information gathering to establish the current state of connectivity in Elgin, including lived experiences from our residents by means of multiple surveys out to our residents and business community. And establishing gaps in service has been done over the past two years. So in our opinion, it is important to continue the the great work of this committee and to follow through on the advocacy plan as developed by the committee. So with that, I'd be happy to receive feedback.
Looking for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just to clarify, would you say that in order to continue the work, because I totally agree, there's great momentum, lots was accomplished. But the the action plan and the advocacy plans are very clear. So do you think, do you recommend that we need a committee to continue that work? Or now that, you know, the action plan has been sort of assigned to staff, would oversight by council as a whole be sufficient?
Through you, Mr. Warden, certainly that could, it could be administered by staff because the committee has established the framework. And can council as a whole could support the the work undertaken, previously undertaken by the committee quite easily to eliminate a committee.
Thank you as a follow up, Mr. Warden. So yeah, I think that would be my recommendation. There was a lot to research and to consider to to really figure out what was the role of a municipality and upper tier municipality, what was the role of council vis a vis connectivity? And I think all of that legwork with input from providers and the community has been achieved, like the goals, the, you know, the impetus that was behind the creation of this committee, I think have been achieved. So to me, as long as we absolutely do not lose sight like this, I've said all along, the the needs have not subsided. They will continue to increase, the gaps are still there. But the plan is very clear, it's very strong, it has, you know, tangible outcomes. So I don't know what more the, you know, the committee could add. So as long as we absolutely do not lose sight of the goals and there's regular reporting on on progress, I think that could be sufficient. And 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 staff can continue to use some of the members of the community and I S Ps and as advisory. But again, without the logistics of a committee, that would be my recommendation. And and on that, I want to recognize all the work that went into this committee from staff. That was, it was, it was huge. And but now we have a really solid foundation to work from.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would agree with Counselor Shiger. I know my member from Southold sits on the committee, questioned his relevance, basically saying the same thing, that all the work had been done, but and he works full time, very busy guy and says, is this, can I justify taking time off? Can I justify taking time off work for this committee any longer? Because he said that I think the work is, for the most part, has been done.
Any additional comments, observations? And fiber is still on the ground. And uh, it's a good thing, uh, we know that uh, there will still be some gaps, but uh, I agree with Counselor Zegar. Sight of this. And uh, moving forward. Maybe the progress will maintain its promise. Um, through Mr. Warden, if I could just report on done and done, which the great strides have been made and done and done, which. Even in remote areas in this tower, we're putting up, but Iona will serve us a, a great part of unconnected. Uh, members of our community. So a lot has been done and great credit to those that pushed for this. We keep, need to keep the pressure on, but I think that can be done without a committee as well.
For sure. Um, and just further to Counselor Zegar's point, I think it will be important to maintain. The connection with, with the expert members who participated on the committee. So they did provide incredible input and great support to the committee and through the committee to county council. Over the past two years. So we'll maintain that connection. The next committee is the environmental committee. So this has come up earlier in today's discussion, um, but worth circling back. We established a committee and council established a committee and then staff after a. I don't know, eight, eight or so months brought forward some revisions to the term of, terms of reference in order to clarify. Kind of the scope and jurisdiction of this committee, um, hoping to make it as productive as possible for committee members. Uh, the committee serves as, as an advisory, resource and information support group to the rural initiatives and planning advisory group. So sort of a subcommittee of the RIPA committee. And is encouraged, uh, or is, was put in place, uh, to promote sustainability. Uh, sustainability programs, education programs and to. Review and support such functions as waste reduction, reuse and recycle programs, water and energy conservation measures. And climate change mitigation. So good intentions. Composition was two members of Elgin County Council and the warden, along with four members at large or citizen appointees. And one representative and of an environmental and or private sector interest group. And one representative of the industrial, commercial and institutional sector. So key considerations for council are that the county has no real environmental jurisdiction. Aside from its own processes and facilities. The county can change how it maintains its facilities to be more energy efficient and we do so on a regular basis. We can use better environmental practices and put some procedures in place uh, for our staff. And again, those are things that happen at the administrative level. Uh, council can also engage in advocacy activities regarding environmental issues that are of concern to its residents. And other than these areas, it's, it has proven to be quite difficult to find really meaningful work for the committee. So they did uh, develop and support a pollinator garden policy. Um, and I would suggest that that's their biggest accomplishment in. Two years. And it's great work. Um, but a lot of, uh, a lot of meetings were held where we did struggle to achieve quorum. This resulted in a loss of staff time and or a duplication of efforts where we then, you know, have to try to. Uh, coordinate an additional meeting and um, reach out to individuals and. Uh, we. We wasn't the most efficient, I would say. Open to feedback.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, through you to council, I would totally agree with Julie's comments. It, it was frustrating at times and. Um, I think uh, some of the people that signed up for the program thought that they're gonna change the world and. That couldn't happen. I, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay, um, could I ask for your opinion? Are you thinking? Do, do, in your opinion, before voting committee and uh, were, was by, I did pull, pull when needed? Or uh, do you think you have a limited mandate with a committee of maybe meeting once or twice a year or something?
Yeah, I, I don't know what to think. Of the member, I think we started off with six members for the public. Three participated. Meetings, uh. One of those probably will most certainly won't be back, uh, because of time commitments. We're going to have to go out and find some new people. If we do have a committee, I do not think once a month is, that's not. That's not even reasonable. Uh, three, every three months, like quarterly, possibly. I think uh, can be established that we need more pollinator gardens at our facilities, uh. Robsite ditches, uh, policy was changed in our official plan. Other than that, uh. You know, I, I, I don't know what to say.
Okay, and Julie, please.
I would recommend that, uh. We're out of the habit. Uh, I would recommend that council consider, again, leveraging committee of the whole for the purposes of. Receiving environmental reports. I suspect that uh, we could as a team develop. Maybe three times a year, a report that summarizes for council. Any environmental activities that we are undertaking and make recommendations to council in that regard.
No, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I would support that because the, so environmental concerns and sustainability are highlighted in our strategic plan. So it, they, those uh, issues and um, goals are absolutely important. But my expectation would be that they transpire then in every department, in every policy. And as opposed to a standalone committee. So I think we could pay even more attention. If we set our expectation for it to be everywhere in our thinking every day. As opposed to, you know, on a quarterly basis by an external uh, committee.
Thank you for those comments. I'm getting the sense, Julie, that uh, except your recommendations with the committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thanks. So the next committee is the museum advisory committee. And this exists to promote Elgin County's rich. Historical and agricultural heritage by ensuring the acquisition, preservation. Exhibiting and interpretation of artifacts pertaining to the history of the county of Elgin. Uh, so you'll see on the slide and as was provided to council in advance, a list of the, the key functions of the committee. The composition does include one member of county council. And I, and a number of other members either from the community, um, from. Uh, as subject matter experts, et cetera. So considerations are that this uh, committee is high functioning. And it remain as status quo.
Not seen a disagreements on that uh, recommendation. Julie, we're about thirty two pages into seventy four page document. And we are past the first hour. I'm gonna call a brief recess, a comfort break, shall we say, and a recharge your coffee cups, okay? So I'll wait for Jenna to, uh. Thank you very much for that. Uh, so I was saying, we left off at page thirty two. We are now page thirty three, community safety and wellbeing. Integration table. Please, Julie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Uh, if I may, just circle back to a question received from a member of council. With respect to where we purchased the community paramedicine vehicles from, and I can confirm it was COTRAC, Ford and Denton.
Through you, Mayor, uh, through you, Warden. Thank you for the information.
Um, so we are now on to the community safety and wellbeing integration table. So through the development of the Elmer Elgin St. Thomas Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. Five areas were identified as the focus and priority for the plan and for our community. We developed an action plan to support each of those five key areas. Uh, to ensure a proactive, balanced and collaborative response across the county. The objectives and more information is available, uh, as part of your agenda. There is a link there to a dedicated webpage. And the composition of the integration table includes the city of St. Thomas mayor and the city of St. Thomas city manager. Elgin County's warden and myself as CAO. A local member of provincial parliament and chairs of each of the five action tables. So the considerations are that uh, the community safety and wellbeing plan was developed as part of a three year plan extending to twenty twenty four. And it's recommended that the integration table remain in place to continue to focus and collaborate on the priority areas as outlined. Within your report. So no changes there.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any comments? Yes, Counselor Jones.
Uh, I think it's, it's uh, important that we continue on with this one. It's uh, definitely has uh, been an eye opener for. Uh, I think all involved.
Thank you for those comments. And I don't see anyone disagreeing with you on that. Okay. Moving on then with agencies and boards.
Yes, thank you. And that, uh, that sums up my portion of the presentation. So I will, with your consent, pass things to Jennifer Fenty, deputy clerk.
Yes, thank you. Jenna.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. Um, pursuant to bylaw nineteen forty, agencies and boards with council appointees are committees to which council makes appointments. But are not committees of council. These committees are bound by the rules established by their own governing bodies and not councils procedural bylaws. So agencies and boards that currently have council appointees include the health recruitment partnership. The city county liaison committee formerly called the city county relations committee with the city of St. Thomas. The southwestern public health board of health. The SWIFT board of directors, St. Thomas Elgin Public Art Center. Thames Valley District School Board Rural Education Task Force. Green Lane Community Trust Fund Committee, the Waste Management Committee. The South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation or SCORE. And Western Ontario's Wardens Caucus. And also there is a committee missing from that list, and that is the Elgin Clean Water Program Review Committee. So I'll just touch on that one a little bit, um, before I move on with health recruitment partnership. So the Elgin Clean Water Program Review Committee. Is administered through the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority. And we have received correspondence from them requests, requesting an appointment from county council. And that committee is currently comprised of the Ontario Soil and Crop Improvement Association, the Elgin Federation of Agriculture. A member of county council and an Elgin County resident. This committee meets a couple times of year, a couple times of, a year to review project applications for grants under the Elgin Clean Water Program. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that one if. If there are any.
Just, uh, really do need somebody on this committee, uh. Obviously, uh, you know, board member from Kettle Creek, and it is important that we have representation to. A lot of money goes out for a lot of good programs. Hopefully somebody will step up. I can't because I'm on board.
Is that a conflict, uh, Counselor Jones?
I am not sure.
I can't imagine, but uh.
No one's ever brought it up, but um.
I was thinking we get.
The last four years, no one said anything about it.
Yeah, I was thinking about getting some extended duty out of, uh, Counselor Jones. Well, we'll consider that one at the appointment time.
Maybe I should open my mouth up too soon.
Okay, thank, uh, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, uh, through you to staff. Just for a full transparency, uh, could you clarify if some of these positions are paid? Uh, positions and if so, which one?
Julie, please answer that.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. So I can confirm that there, there are two committees, I believe, SCORE. Uh, and SWIFT who pay mileage associated with having a council member attend the meetings. There is no direct compensation associated with council participation on those boards. Uh, I have to confirm, but I do believe southwestern public health does pay a per diem. But that per diem is not paid directly to individual members of council, rather that information flows back into county coffers. So no, no members of council, uh, are, uh. Financially benefit from any of these committees.
To clarify, before you do, Counselor Jones, uh, my experience with SCORE is that, uh, they do not redeem mileage. But uh, the post municipality or whoever you were representing did. Um, I represented BAM around SCORE for probably ten years. And occasionally I might, you know, ask for a mileage expense from BAM, but not very often. I mean, uh, typically, uh, when the board meetings were held in Tulsa, it was just twelve kilometers up the road. You couldn't hear that? Barely. Mic was on. Oh, all right. Will. All right, uh, thank you for that. Okay, but, uh. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I believe, uh, selfless public health pays mileage, uh, definitely when you go to Oxford County for meetings, uh. Possibly when a, a small per diem, uh, mileage, uh, in Elgin.
Sounds like an incentive to serve. Julie.
I think our mics may be too close for feedback, but uh, just to clarify, when an external board does cover mileage for a counselor. The mile, the counselor cannot also claim mileage from the county. So it's either or. And so for council members who are appointed to external boards. Uh, your mileage is covered because you are conducting county business as appointed by county council. So either way, your mileage is covered, just sometimes by, by an external agency.
Okay, now we're circling back to the health recruitment program.
Thank you. Uh, the Health Recruitment Partnership is a collaboration between the city of St. Thomas, the county of Elgin. And the St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital that supports physician recruitment efforts for the St. Thomas Elgin area. In response to growing local demand for primary physicians in the community. The Health Recruitment Partnership was formed as a joint county city initiative in two thousand and seven. To develop activities with the goal of attracting new family physicians to the area as well as offering new physician support. As they integrate into the community. This committee was originally launched as a two year pilot project, but worked so well that the county has been providing funding for the program since its inception. The committee's work seems to improve the overall health and wellbeing of the community. And helps alleviate pressure on the St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital and emergency medical services. In addition to supporting the salary of a part time health recruiter, funding from the county and the city supports scholarships. For up to five local St. Thomas and or county of Elgin residents. Who are enrolled in a Canadian medical school with an emphasis placed on the pursuit of a career in family medicine. Remaining funds are utilized to support new physicians as they set up their practice through a loan program. Which is a loan that is forgiven after a four year commitment to service in Elgin and St. Thomas. This committee, um, appoints one member from county council as recommended by the warden each year. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that one.
Thank you for that, Jenna. Uh, I know that Counselor Jones has served on this in the past and he's probably in a better position to comment on it than I am.
Um, thank you, Ms. Warden. Uh. This is, uh, something. This is something where we're bringing new doctors in two or three a year. And without the recruitment, we probably wouldn't pull these people in because it takes a lot of work on our recruiter to go out and reach out to these young med students, just leaving the residencies and without it, a lot of these people wouldn't become to because there's a lot of draw from bigger cities and once you find out that Elgin St. Thomas has a lot to offer, we're fairly successful in bringing people in to replace the retiring doctors and also to cover the growth that we're seeing. So I, I can't imagine what it would look, it would look like around here without the recruitment. There's been so many doctors recruited over the past few years that be a shame to see it go for sure. I was surprised to see it's a one-year commitment since I don't remember being reappointed every year, but definitely I've enjoyed the four years I was on it for sure.
Thank you for those comments, Counsel Cocke.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, a question. How much, how much money is actually available for new physicians in this program?
I don't think there's an upset limit. Is it thirty-five thousand? Thirty-five thousand.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Thirty-five thousand.
And that to you, Mr. Warden, that thirty-five thousand is a is a loan program for you doctors coming in particularly?
That is correct. That's a lot of the new ones coming in, they're taking over old practices. A lot of the older doctors don't have everything digitized, so they have a massive filing system, which the new doctors don't want. So it's part of the package to encourage them to come to Elgin County to set up practice. It's, it's a very competitive world out there right now, bringing new doctors in.
Thank you.
Yes, Julie.
If I may, through you, Mr. Warden, just to clarify, it is a forgivable loan program. So up to up to thirty-five thousand dollars, and I should verify because it could be thirty-three thousand dollars. Notwithstanding the actual dollar amount, the physicians who are coming to the county and/or the City of St. Thomas through this program are obligated to serve for a minimum of four years in the community in order for that loan to be forgiven. So they sign an agreement to that effect.
Counsel Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I know this would be a very important program, but I know Elmer's in a bit of a crisis for doctors right now. Like, I, first time in my life, I don't have a doctor. And speaking the doctor that just took over less than a year ago, the reasons he's quitting don't seem to match what the incentives are here. So something's going wrong here. I don't know what it is. But you can't get a doctor in Elmer right now. It's just impossible. And you try to go anyplace else, you can't get in. So a bit of a crisis going on. I mean, I say we get that alleviated.
Thank you for those comments, Counsel Jones.
I would agree. This is province-wide, not Canada-wide. It is a huge competition right now to bring these doctors in and anything we can do to bring them in, especially in the rural areas, it is a challenge. No question about it. And something we talk about every month that around the table trying to figure out where we're going to get the next doctor from, because I think this year we have three or four retiring. And there's always one that might leave for a different getting married or going back to family. So it's, it's an ongoing battle to keep people in the seats.
Counsel Cocke.
Through you, Mr. Warden, just to comment on Counsel Widner. Everyone's aware of the situation in Elmer where we do have a doctor shortage. And I can state that in the last three years in Elmer, we have had three new doctors. They've moved through pretty quickly. None of those doctors have been supported by the Health Recruitment Partnership in terms of funds. So they've come down for other kinds of reasons, but it is a provincial concern, and we're doing everything we can to recruit doctors. It's just that they, they move through the system very quickly.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm not sure if that's entirely correct. I'm pretty certain we have supported some doctors in Elmer recently. Fairly certain about that, but we can get back to you on that one.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, we, he's talking to the family health team, has received funding for doctors. I should correct myself. None of that funding has been forgivable loaned. We went towards providing materials and support for doctors in other ways, but I'm not sure where that funding came from, whether it was the health recruitment, but it did come from the county in some way. So maybe through this, through this program. So I guess to correct myself is that the thirty-five, we never did receive thirty-five thousand dollars per doctor or anything in that nature.
Okay. Counsel Jones.
I think probably what's going on is we don't deal with the health team. We deal with the individual doctor privately. So it'd be the doctor actually applies to the health recruitment for that, not through the team itself. It's a personal loan, right?
I had a question, but go ahead, Julie.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. We'd be happy to provide a a report on the activities and recruitment initiatives associated with the Health Recruitment Partnership or council's review. It is important for councils consideration as part of the twenty twenty-three budget deliberations because given the number of physicians we did recruit over the past two years, it's trending upward where we will be seeking councils increased support, financial support for this program as part of the upcoming budget cycle. So we'll provide more information to you at that time. And I should also note that in the absence of a committee, I have been meeting with the city manager and the health recruiter to review our current incentive program and to explore what other communities are doing for the purpose of bringing forward new recommendations to the committee in early twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for that.
Counsel Jones, just one final question for you. Could you comment on the sphere of influence, meaning is the Health Recruitment Partnership active outside of the City of St. Thomas? Does it cover Elgin County as a whole, or is it simply surrounding the hospital?
No, we cover all doctors within the county. So whether it's West Elgin or East Elgin, we don't discriminate.
Thank you for providing that clarity. Now, Counsel Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Maybe through you to Mr. Jones. I know some municipalities do exit interviews. Like, maybe it'd be a good idea to ask this doctor, like, what went wrong? Because the conversations I've had with him, a lot of it was a financial thing. We're just not done. But if you could maybe just ask the guy quickly or ask what's going on, maybe it would prevent this from happening again. Thank you.
We actually hadn't heard that things had gone wrong. So at least personally, Julie has any comments?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counsel Widner. That is a key function of our health recruiter whose salary is offset by county and city contributions. So she does undertake when possible, and when she's able to reach the physicians, she does undertake an exit interview with them for the purposes of collecting that data to help inform the program.
Okay, thank you for that. And he'll be done the end of December, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. That was a lot of discussion on that program. A lot of interest there. Okay, let's move forward then.
The next committee is the City-County Liaison Committee, which is comprised of the City of St. Thomas and the county. And the warden recommends and council appoints one member of council to serve on this committee for a one-year term.
Thank you for that, Jenna. Anyone have any comment on that? Other than I will offer these remarks. I was to serve on this committee for a past term and was never exercised. So this may be one of those committees that you may wish to not continue with. Julie, I mean, this could be relegated to the office of the warden if you wish.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. So that was going to be my suggestion. In my five years at the county, there has never been a city-county liaison committee meeting. Instead, what we've done is met jointly as full councils with clerks present to undertake joint business or meet with other partner agencies or pursue new initiatives. Alternatively, I have direct experience meeting with the city manager and the warden and the city mayor. So I think this work does happen, though not through this committee as presented.
Okay, any comments on that? Willing to accept perhaps, as you say, the committee, the whole and/or the warden to maintain that liaison? Okay. Thank you. Moving forward.
The next outside board is the Southwestern Public Health Board of Health. The Board of Health for Oxford, Elgin and St. Thomas governs Southwestern Public Health, and they are accountable to the province and make sure that programs and services are that are delivered align with the funding they receive. There is a link there to view more information about the board. And council appoints two members of council as recommended by the warden each year. And included in the presentation, there is correspondence that we have received from Southwestern Public Health requesting that council appoint members for twenty twenty-three. And there also is a list of dates that they've already set for these board meetings.
Thank you for that, Jenna. Any discussion? I believe this is one of those things that we need to be at the table at. I would look forward to everyone throwing their name in the hat for this most coveted committee. Counsel Jones.
The county puts a lot of money into this, so, yeah.
Yes. Agreed. Okay, moving on then, Jenna.
The next committee is the SWIFT Network Board of Directors. So SWIFT was initiated by the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and was established to strategically leverage public funding to incent broadband expansion across southwestern Ontario's underserviced communities. The board ensures proper oversight over SWIFT's operational, financial and reporting processes. There is a link to their website there if you'd like more information. And we have received correspondence from SWIFT that was included in your package, recommending or requesting that council appoint one member as recommended by the warden to the Board of Directors to serve a one-year term.
Thank you for that, Jenna. Comments from council? I think like some of the other outside boards and agencies, this one has a limited time horizon. Once they get broadband across the province, I'm not sure what use there would be for having SWIFT anymore, but so it may have a limited time horizon. What do you think? Should we have a member? Staff are indicating, I think that we should.
Short answer, yes.
Yeah, I'm seeing. Julie, please.
If I may, through you, Mr. Warden, I think it's important for council to know that council's investment in the SWIFT program exceeds five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And so providing that oversight and having ready easy, easy access to information about how the SWIFT program is being directed, administered in Elgin is critically important. So I would recommend that council appoint a member to the SWIFT board.
Okay, seeing nods. Let's move on.
The next board is the St. Thomas Elgin Public Art Center. This board has a mission to encourage and promote an appreciation for and to support the practice of the visual arts in St. Thomas and throughout Elgin County through a variety of exhibitions, educational programs, and through the preservation of a permanent collection. Council appoints one member annually as recommended by the warden to serve on the St. Thomas Elgin Public Art Center Board of Directors. However, I will note that we have not received correspondence from the St. Thomas Elgin Public Art Center requesting an appointee for this year.
Thank you for that. Counsel Sugar.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I can clarify. I'm the current sitting member representative of the county, and it is the expectation, they may not have sent correspondence yet, but it is the expectation that representation would continue.
Thank you for that. Again, I'm not seeing any objections. Okay.
The next outside board is the Thames Valley District School Board Rural Education Task Force. On Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, the Thames Valley Board of Trustees passed a motion to establish a rural education task force. Recognizing that schools in rural areas face a variety of challenges, including student enrollment, school population growth and decline and other factors, the role of the Rural Education Task Force is to listen to the ideas and concerns of rural communities, generate fresh perspectives related to rural schools and communities, develop innovative solutions for consideration for a Thames Valley District School Board Rural Education Strategy, and report findings and make recommendations to the board regarding rural schools. The task force consults with students, parents, community municipal leaders in the Thames Valley District School Board Rural Communities and identifies the unique challenges and opportunities experienced by students, parents and municipalities. And they develop recommendations for consideration related to a Thames Valley District School Board Rural Strategy. Council appoints one member to serve on the task force and also identifies an alternate. I will also note that we have not yet received correspondence from Thames Valley District School Board requesting an appointee or an alternate for this year.
Thank you for that, Jenna. Counsel Jones.
Yeah, but if memory serves me correct, when this task force made a recommendation to the board, the board rejected it on a technicality based on the makeup of the task force, I believe. So the, is that correct? And I know they refused to receive the report.
I think it was more of a procedural issue and less of a composition issue. So it was how the report was, was received and presented, if I recall correctly.
Counsel Sugar.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I, I would like to have received more information from the board as to the actual status of this task force. I'm the alternate right now, and I have not received any correspondence since, I think, last February when the, the report, the draft report was supposed to be considered, and then it was not. And then it's, as far as I can tell from my email correspondence, it's just been silenced. So I'm wondering even the, what is the status, the official status?
I would agree with you. My understanding is that the task force itself was discontinued at the board. One, and I know Counsel Cocke has a comment or a question as well. I'm wondering if is this something, since we did not receive any correspondence requesting an appointment, is this something that could be rolled into and under the mandate of the Rural Initiatives and Plan Advisory Committee? There is an education component there, is there not? So we can still keep an eye on it, but at the same token, not attribute more resources to it. Counsel Cocke.
Just a brief comment. I believe though, through you, Ms. Warden, the, the task force has been disbanded, which is really unfortunate because the board receives very little input about the importance of rural schools. about the importance of rural schools in in this huge board. Uh you mentioned something about having uh access in in another committee, and I missed that.
Through the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee. I believe it's within their mandate, is it not, Julie? Yes. Julie.
Uh through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council, we'll reach out to the school board and confirm. I I haven't received any notification that the committee disbanded, um and I believe it was still posted on their website. And so I'll reach out, get that confirmation report back to council uh when we present the changes to the committee bylaw.
Thank you for that. Moving on with the Green Lane Community Trust Fund.
The Green Lane Community Trust Fund is a community fund for any charitable or municipal project within the county of Elgin, including the city of Saint Thomas of a benevolent and community service nature in the interests of the environment or in the interest of the civic, social or moral welfare of the residents. Council appoints one member every other year as it alternates with the city of Saint Thomas to serve on the Green Lane Community Trust Committee. This year, it is the county's turn to appoint a a member for twenty twenty-three.
Any comments? Counselor Jones?
Pretty straightforward. Uh as Mayor of Southland, I'm the chair of the committee. Uh it's uh one of the few tasks where you you get to give give out Toronto's money, so. Which is always fine. Um, but anyway, no, it's a a great worthwhile cause. Uh it's uh four meetings or the the year, and then there'll be four meetings uh two years hence.
Okay, thank you for that. Jenna? Next.
The next committee is the Waste Management Committee, which has been a liaison committee administered through the city of Saint Thomas. And pursuant to our committee bylaw, all of county councils serve as members of the Waste Management Committee. However, I don't believe there have been meetings of the Waste Management Committee in recent years.
I don't foresee anything new, so the status quo can probably remain. So moving on.
The next board is the South Central Ontario Region Economic Development or SPOR. The SPOR EDC was incorporated in two thousand and ten as a means to provide planning and coordination for regional issues, implement regional economic development priorities, identify funding sources and to partner with other levels of government and act as a regional catalyst for investment. There is a link there to find out more about this SPOR initiative. And as noted in your package, we have received correspondence requesting the appointment of two members of council to the scoreboard of directors.
Thank you for that, Jenna. Any comments from council? And of course, uh several uh members haven't uh been around the scoreboard before. And uh it's something new. Obviously, I would think that uh it would come up in our budget deliberations, but I would also uh wonder if it might be prudent to have uh SPOR's executive director make a presentation to council to let them know of what's going on, what their role is, and uh let council make a determination if they see value. Does that sound fair? Okay, yep, Counselor Cookett.
Just a question, uh Mr. Warden, what is the uh what what is the cost to belong to SPOR?
If I recall, it's twenty-five thousand a year, thirty thousand now. All right.
I just confirmed it's twenty-five.
I thought it was twenty-five.
You were right.
Yes. Uh and just as a brief praise, the um it's a collaboration of the five counties, okay? And that's what the majority of the funding is uh runs the uh the office and funds some staff as well as some different projects, and they are able to leverage some funding through programs such as uh OMAP's RED program uh for special projects. But I still think it'd be beneficial to have uh Kim Earls in to uh make a presentation and uh just gauge your interest. I'm a fan of SPOR. I love it quite hard to get Elgin back in, so I'm a little biased. What's next?
The last committee is the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, which is a not for prop, not for prop, not sorry, not-for-profit organization representing fifteen upper and single-tier municipalities in southwestern Ontario with more than three million residents. Western Ontario Wardens Caucus advocates on behalf of counties on key items such as infrastructure, transportation, long-term care, broadband and economic development, and the warden serves as council's appointed member.
Counselor Jones?
I I think this uh definitely something that we need to be a part of. Uh obviously, the SWIFT program came out of Western Wardens initially and morphed from there. Uh a lot of good stuff happening there with Kate Burns, who is our in economic development. She uh basically is in charge, I I believe, now of Western Orange for the most part, so that definitely something we need to be at.
Okay, any? No objections so far. All right. Julie, uh I think that wraps up the uh discussion on that. Uh you have a motion?
Be it resolved that the presentation titled Council Committee Considerations from the Chief Administrative Officer and Manager of Administrative Services and Deputy Clerk be received and filed, and that staff be directed to amend council's committee bylaw to reflect changes proposed by council for enactment at a future meeting.
Okay, a mover and secondor for that. Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? Uh, um, any opposed? You're okay with that? Okay. And that is carried. Just should note that uh yes, we will be soliciting some uh information uh or interest from you on uh which committees you'd like to serve on. Uh it is a requirement to choose at least one. But uh there are, there are rewarding experiences on all of these committees actually to be had, and I would encourage you to put some good thought to it. Obviously, some of these have higher value uh considerations for Elgin, thinking of Southwest Public Health. Really want to make sure we have some good scrutiny around that particular board table, so please give it some due consideration. Um, Counselor Hens.
Uh, Mr. Warden, just a question. How do you want to proceed with that? Do we send a list of our expectations or our wishes to you or to staff as far as what committees we would have interest in?
I would think uh a similar process to what was followed back in two thousand and eighteen, whereas it would be initiated from this office uh to identify the various committees. You tell us which ones you prefer. And then we would uh I'll follow up with a conversation one-on-one with everyone, and we'll try to gauge the best interest and try the best fit. And then uh in the meeting in this January, I believe, we'll make those appointments and uh council will endorse. Okay?
Thank you.
That is of, unless Julie tells me I've got that wrong. Don't see that. Moving on then with section six point nine. Uh Chief Administrative Officer Overtime and Lou On-Call Standby and Call-In in HR Policy two point one oh Hours of Work Alternate Work Arrangement. Julie?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to seek council's approval for two new human resources policies, including an overtime and loop policy, as well as an on-call standby and call-in policy. This report also recommends that council consider directing staff to prepare amendments to an existing policy, HR Policy two point one zero, which is Hours of Work Alternative Work Arrangement Policy, which we've attached to your report uh for your consideration and approval at the January tenth meeting of council. Uh additionally, this report suggests that council consider directing the C A O to restrict uh participation in the A W A program or that alternative work arrangement policy until council has had the opportunity to undertake uh a thorough review of any proposed changes coming forward uh for your consideration at Jan- January tenth uh meeting. So council does have a long-established practice and commitment to providing high-quality public service supported by an engaged and effective workforce and flexible working arrangements uh support our staff in being able to enhance operational efficiency and effectiveness, support work-life balance, and adapt to evolving service and workforce needs. While continuing to ensure we're providing a high level of service to our community. Clear policies regarding the interrelated issues of approval to work overtime, overtime compensation, on-call and standby procedures, and alternative work arrangements will enhance the ability of the county's managers and directors to recruit and retain employees as well as administer the county's operations. So in two thousand and one, county council approved a policy, the um hours of work and alternative work arrangement policy, and this was originally intended to support employees who were required to shift their hours of work typically, you know, half an hour in the morning, work through half an hour of your lunch break and be able to take the occasional day off. It was not intended for the purpose of general overtime management when it was implemented. As a result, the provisions are being um kind of broadly interpreted by staff, and it is based on the honor system. Uh so this is why I am suggesting that we put some parameters around the program as well. Uh you'll see in your report, there are a number of intersecting policies. And so we have to make sure that uh our flexible work program is dovetails nicely with the and and in accordance with other policies that are currently in place. So this is the first step in probably a multi-step um policy review that will be brought forward to council for your review. And in the interim, we are just uh suggesting that we restrict participation in A W A so that we are able to appropriately manage um overtime, loo time, et cetera. So the policy is before you. I tried to include as many details as I reasonably could within the report, but I would be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you for that report, Julie. Does anyone have any questions for staff on this? Counselor Sloan.
Thank you. Um, through the warden, um I have a question, and I ask for your indulgence to my council colleagues who have been here before but want to share a perspective from the private sector. This is a seventy-million-dollar organization. It will be presumably eighty, but it it twenty twenty of the last documents available online. Um governance is an issue to me, and I believe all the council. Um I have an issue with loo time for senior staff. I don't think it should be used during council time. So we meet twice a month on average. We have a important uh an impressive list of things in front of us to consider. And personally, I would like to have that council uh of all senior staff who are available. Um, I don't think twice a month is necessarily an issue, so I'd like to know if that could be changed so that the loo for senior staff is not allowed uh on days that the council will be meeting. Thank you.
Uh through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan, does that include vacation?
Uh through you, Warden. I think vacation is different. This is specific to loo time. Loo time seems to be used during the year that it was amassed, if you will. Um so I would suggest the same thing. Um to me, holidays and uh leave for sickness would be totally different. Thank you.
Julie?
So I'm I'm not aware of any instances wherein staff, senior staff have used loo time uh to uh forego a council meeting or council meeting attendance. Generally, our staff are quite conscientious and and do attend meetings wherein they have reports to present. Uh our practice at council has been, uh in order to make the most efficient use of our senior leadership's time, uh that they do attend council meetings when they are presenting reports. Um otherwise, they are working productively in in the building. What we found in the past was occasionally some of our senior leadership team would only present say quarterly reports to council, and sometimes council meetings extended, you know, six hours in length, uh during which time it's hard for those staff members to conduct meaningful work while sitting in the council chambers. And so uh council supported at that time that senior leaders did only attend when they had presentations to make and or when they wanted to attend and observe someone else's presentation. So I'm not sure if that provides you with a little bit more information as to our current practice. Um and perhaps I'm not fully understanding um what change you'd like to see.
I didn't have mine on either. Julie, uh I guess more germane to the question than, are you aware of uh staff who do take uh or utilize you loo time during uh the days when council is meeting?
Not, not to my knowledge, no. I have had staff who have either been ill or used vacation, pre-planned scheduled vacation to be absent from a council meeting, otherwise staff are here as needed. Um but but we we could incorporate that into uh the proposed changes for the alternative work arrangement policy that we uh suggest be brought forward to council on January tenth.
Through you, Warden. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh through you, uh Counselor Sloan. I've been here ten years, and I really don't recall a staff member being absent if they had a report uh in ten years, so I'm not sure where this is coming from.
Thank you for that.
Through the warden, um for me, Counselor Jones, it's just an issue of governance. Thank you.
Thank you for that, uh and I think it's been a good discussion. Uh I do agree that uh with the policy that uh senior staff aren't simply sitting in the room for the the purpose of sitting in the room, but they are within due hale that should we need them, we can get them here. And I think that's important. So and I think that's perhaps lends itself to what you're getting at, is that uh should that expertise be needed during a council meeting, it's readily attainable. Okay, thank you for that. Further discussion? Julie, you have a recommendation?
Be it resolved that the report titled Overtime and Lou On-Call and Standby and Call-In and HR Policy two point one zero Hours of Work and Alternative Work Arrangement from the Chief Administrative Officer dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two be received and filed for information, and that the overtime and loop policy be approved as presented for implementation effective January first twenty twenty-three, and that the on-call standby and call-in policy be approved as presented for implementation, January first, twenty twenty-three. And further, that staff be directed to amend HR Policy two point one zero Hours of Work and Alternative Work Arrangement Policy for presentation to council at its meeting on January tenth, twenty twenty-three, and direct the C A O to restrict participation in the program until council has undertaken a review of the policy.
Thank you for that. Uh mover and secondor, please. Counselor Hens will move. Counselor Jones will second. All in favor? Is there any opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. We have a few items of correspondence under section seven. I think after we go through this, we're going to take a quick break before we go into uh the closed session, okay? So item seven point two, items for information, the consent agenda. Does anyone want to take us through those uh pieces of correspondence? Is there anything there that is, has anyone's interest piqued and they'd like to speak to? Okay, then Julie, the motion, please.
Be it resolved that correspondence item seven point two point one to seven point two point six be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Cockett will move. And Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Uh, section eight, other business, eight point one, statements, inquiries by members. Counselor Sloan.
Firstly, thank you very much, Warden. I'd like to make a statement. As the newly sworn mayor and on behalf of the people of central Elgin, I'd like to use my first statement here. To congratulate Warden Ketchabom, Warden Ketchabom, and wish him well in his role as warden. Counselor Noble and I look forward to working with the warden and appreciate his historic and continued dedication to the County of Elgin as well as the people of Bayham. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other statements by members? Eight point two, notice of motion. And eight point three, any matters of urgency? Glad to see there's nothing urgent today. All right, we will now be moving into a closed session, Julie. We need to do that and then we're going to take a short break.
Be it resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters. Under municipal act, section two thirty-nine, two, in camera item number nine point one, labor relations and employee negotiations. As well as K, a plan, position, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried out. Carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. As well as in camera, in camera item number nine point two. Which is municipal act, section two thirty-nine, two F, and in camera item number nine point three, which is section two thirty-nine, two B, personnel matters.
Okay, mover and seconder, please. Counselor Whitner will move. Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That is carried. We're in a close session. We're good. Welcome back. We're at that section of the agenda, section ten, motion to rise and report.
Be it resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Shiger, Counselor Whitner will second. All in favor? That is carried. Uh, motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Jones, Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That is carried. Consideration of bylaws?
Be at a first, so I'm sorry, we have to back up a bit.
We do?
Yes, we missed rise and reports for each of the three closed session items. Which can be covered now. It's missing from the.
It's missing from the agenda. I follow the script. Okay.
Sorry. For for closed session item number one, be it resolved that the Director of Human Resources proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Cockett will second. All in favor? That's carried.
For closed session item number two, be it resolved that the report from the Director of Legal Services be received for information.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Jones will move. Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried.
And for closed session item number three, be it resolved that the Chief Administrative Officer proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Uh, Counselor Noble, Counselor Shiger, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Now we can move on down to. Uh, consideration of bylaws.
Thank you. Thanks. Be it a first, second and third read by law number twenty-two dash forty-nine. Being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin. At the December sixth and seventh, two thousand and twenty-two meetings.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Counselor Hens will second. All in favor? That is carried and the adjournment motion, the one that everyone's been looking for. Counselor Jones and Counselor Whitner. Uh, do you want to read the motion or we just go with it?
Be it resolved that we do now adjourn at one oh two P M. To meet again on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. A M.
Okay, move, uh, all in favor. That is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.